It is maybe a minute past six and I'm gonna call the regular select board meeting to order. Tonight is August the 15th, the Ides of August. First up is to approve minutes from last time, which was August 1st. Could we have a motion to that effect?
So move. Second.
Any comments, changes, adjustments?
Over here.
Oh, that's right. I just wanna comment that you did a nice job summarizing my long, rambling thing about the budget and unexpected revenues. That was nicely summarized. If I could've read that, it would've been much more concise. Alright, so all in favor-
I did watch it and understood it, so.
You did?
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you read this, it's a law shorter and it gets to the same point. So, all in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries with one abstention that wasn't here.
Yes, absenteeism.
Next is set and adjust agenda. Does anybody have any changes, additions, stuff?
Nope.
Oh boy, something I was gonna remember for Old Business, but I didn't write it down, so it probably won't come to me.
Put it in an Old Business.
Yeah, but I don't remember what it is.
It'll come later.
It might.
Write it down, Luke.
I'll see if it does. Alright, next is, I'm gonna roll with the agenda we have. Communication from the audience, everybody's here for something. Next is town manager report. Shawn Fielder, tell us about what's happening in your office.
Okay, so coming off the last select board meeting, I did do the update to V-Trans, FAST, and their engineering contractors, Summit Engineering, for the Creamery Road project. The intent is we'll maintain the railroad tracks. So Summit Engineering actually has already done some field work on that, and actually Eric and I met with them, Doug from the firm, earlier this week, and they were at a point where we'll get our design information. Sorry, I'm confusing projects, let me step back. They are working on developing the updated plan, and we'll have that probably in the next four to six week period. So, things are progressing nicely there. We do have a representative here with A&amp;E, so just I'll hit this quick because it is one of the agenda items. We have the ongoing discussions with the Bridgerton Reservoir Roof Project, so there's been a lot of communications between the town and the office with the construction bid opening this last week. We'll hear more about that in a few minutes. We have transitioning to the Yellow Barn project, and there is a lot of continued positive activity on this. We have received from V-Trans what is known as a letter of intent. This is for the access permit. It's basically a precursor to the access permit, is how I would frame this, so that's a positive. What that is, that's one thing that is needed for us as project planners to proceed with our own zoning department and get the application rolling, if you will. We're figuring out the exact timing on that particular item. I'm talking about the town's zoning application. That's not finalized, but we're gonna review this this next week. I'm actually gonna be communicating with Kristen in the office, just to confirm with her what is her observation would be the best time to go forward on this. In addition, for the project, we have received our state wetlands permit, so that's very significant, and there are ongoing meeting, planning meetings, excuse me, taking place. One detailed item, we had intended to have the purchase of the property so that the town took ownership, taken care of by September 30th, but we know that's gonna be after that deadline at this phase, so we have, Casey's been assisting, and we have been processing the extension paperwork with Northern Border Regional Commission, and the indication there is that's not a problem, and we'll be able to do that, and it keeps everything on target in regards to that funding source to be used for the purchase of the property. I'm gonna just keep going, if anybody has any questions, please let me know. Back to the LVRT project, Eric did sign off on the grant paperwork last week for the, it's the section from Slap Hill out toward Pumpkin Lane. On that particular project, we do have design work continuing. We're at a point now where we will provide the designs, most likely next week, early next week, we'll push the design information over to USDA, just to make sure that they're in concurrence, there's the correct detail shown, and the information that's being prepared by Summit Engineering.
Oh, I have one, two things on that while we're on it. I did drop off the paperwork in that corner of the, there.
You have it.
She's got it, for the grant, and one thing they told me when I went over to St. John's area is that they send this notice to the congressional delegation to give them a heads up in case they wanna do anything, and so after we hear from them is when we would try to do a public announcement, and maybe, maybe we could get Doug or someone from the Gazette to do a write-up on that, at that point.
That's good. The, on another, it's a separate project, but another project with the rail trail, FAST is leading this up, we're collaborating with Ken Brown on this. There's design, it's nearly complete for the redecking and railings for bridges, what are referred to as 38 and 40, so these are out to the east. We're getting close to having those designs in order. I've indicated this in previous meetings. The intent on that project is that those decks and railings are installed this year, so that's a positive. That's it on LVRT. The last thing here is just ongoing coordination with the estate attorney for the former, the patent property, which we refer to as the Kerry Road property. We're still sorting through the legal details of distributing some of the assets that are on the property. The town obviously owns the land, owns the buildings, but some of those assets are still being sorted out in probate court. One item that is resolved, so we should anticipate this being taken care of next week, the estate attorney has coordinated a purchase with a vendor of the double wide, that's the one you see as you're coming inbound before you hit the Dollar General on the right-hand side, and if all goes well, that will be going away this next week.
Wow. That is a step.
Well, that's a step, but I'm ready to step it up. I would like to relocate that trail prior to snowmobile season, which would mean stuff needs to be cleaned out of there. I mean, we've been patient, this property has been a thorn in our side for, from a trail perspective, for a decade, two decades.
Is there a date on the auction?
We don't have that yet, but that is coming along. We should get indication on that pretty soon, when that's gonna be taking place as well.
So, I'd like to see some deadlines in auction, property cleaned up.
We can't push probate very hard, can we?
Well, we can find out some dates, I'm sure.
I can check.
I mean, probate can last forever.
We've been in communication, but we know it's gonna be her chat, right?
Well, there's one timeline I am aware of, and that is that the estate attorney did a posting in mid-May, they have to give four months for any previous creditors to come forward, so I think by about September 15th, we should see things starting to move pretty quick, but I can check Danny.
That's what I'm saying, is when that ends, we're not gonna give them 12 months to clean that place up.
No, up to this point.
And I mean, all I'm concerned about is we either gotta do some more repair to that trail in the existing location, which-
Set it over, but even setting it over is still, isn't that still within what the town owned before?
Well, it could be, but we gotta move some, yeah.
But there's stuff in the way.
The town's still owned, but there's stuff still in the way there. The trailer's still in the way, that's right. I mean, that tractor trailer is in the railroad right of way, that fence is in the railroad, everything that-
I know the fence was, but there's stuff on the other side of the fence as well.
Mr. Rob Lewis allowed them to take, I mean, Charlie Oak, at one point we had that right of way cleared.
I know.
And it got cut, it got cut in half.
So it's not, okay, so there's big stuff that needs to be moved, it's not a, and are you anticipating some of that stuff to get away with the auction or anything?
No, I don't believe.
The intent is to auction those things.
Yeah, but I can't, I don't know who would, nobody's buying, nobody's buying garbage.
Right, but I said, what about the big items, and he said, well, we'll try to auction them, but we don't know.
Well, what happens if they don't go at auction?
And we're dealing with it.
That is metal, some of that, right?
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that when, I would like it to be ready.
You're ready to go.
When probate ends, there's no reason we can't have enough planning foresight to start taking care of it immediately. Because ideally, it would be best if that trail got away from where it was and came down onto the path property, the edge of the path property, and just, it's simple, it's clean, it's, it'd be much more pleasant for everyone, a better access to the road, to Kerry Roads, it's safer, just, so all I'm saying is, yeah, I'm just saying, start planning so when the action is final, 'cause otherwise, it's gonna be February, again. That's all I'm saying. And a question for you, does that mean that the Lamar Valley Rail Bed is going to be open for snowmobiles straight through East Hottet this winter?
So, we would have, I wouldn't think that people would wanna advertise it as such.
Well, I'm not 100% sure now that the snowmobile club knows that it's gonna be usable, that they're not gonna wanna make it a bathroom.
I'm still thinking there's still the narrow part where Tom had brought material and you smoothed it out, and that's pretty narrow through there.
Yeah.
But once those bridges are-
But once the bridges are done, that's the last big hurdle for, because it's gonna be an issue, because I can tell you right now, as it adds to snowmobile, there's gonna be people riding. So, people riding there.
They aren't gonna be able to groomer through, right, the way it is right now.
Because of that one watchout.
Oh, actually, there's another one, there's that one, yeah, the one, that is actually gonna be the big interruption unless somebody wanted to, if Culver dropped it, Bailey's-
Jump it.
Jump it, that's true, it is banked.
These are questions people are gonna be asking.
So, where are we at?
So, we gotta decide if we're gonna, no, I'm just saying, that's gonna be a big hurdle for anyone that wants to use it regardless.
It sure is.
You're a pretty stout mountain biker, but you're gonna have to get around on that.
Walk through that, that's true, I do.
So, yeah, I just-
But with the bridges, it's a lot safer.
Well, once we get the bridges open, then it's gonna be more appealing for people, for sure.
Yeah, so we still have the narrow part, for snowmobiles, the things that occur to me is that narrow part.
I would agree, they're not grooming across that.
And then the, that part that got dug out, and I'm not positive, if I were, probably the groomer would be fine going across the cattle pass just before that.
Yeah.
And it's not a far drop if they fell in, it's probably like four feet.
But still, I mean, I'm not saying if they're gonna, I just, these are questions that I've already been asked.
Yeah, so I'd like to get in touch with, alright, so just to move on, I'd like, if you could put me in touch with whoever's on the-
So they can start thinking about it.
On the local-
Because if they're gonna take it over, the ridge runners or whatever they, I'll do that.
That'd be great.
Just a caution, I mean, we're, what we've been told is the deck and railings are gonna be on, that's just, you know, hopefully they are. If they're not, this is a done deal.
Well, I guess for me, it's a solid, we got more work to do, but anyway.
Yeah, we do, but it's possible that it's-
I was asked about it, so.
I mean, if those two bridges go according to schedule, then the Black Bridge one is gonna look pretty rough.
What is gonna be, do you know, what is the fix gonna be for Bailey? Because I'm the one that dug it out.
Three-foot culvert.
So, all we gotta do is put a big, a half.
Three-foot culvert is what's on the design from Doug.
Yep.
And the same thing for the existing cattle cross, three-foot culvert.
Take it out or stick it out.
Take it out, put a three-foot culvert in there. So there'll be two of them.
Right, I think that was, not solid thinking.
Yes, so if a three-foot culvert did fall in there and somebody filled it in the trail, then would we be ahead?
We would be out of the gate.
We would.
Except a three-foot culvert's probably $29,000.
Yeah.
We do have to just coordinate with the landowners, and V-Trans is involved with this, just to, you know, make sure legally we can do that, 'cause it's a recognized cattle pass.
I'm not a cattle passer.
No, no, that's on my, that's on my action item list.
My snowmobile definitely jumped out.
Okay, alright.
Can I jump back to Kerry Road property? Just to give Danny some feedback, the estate attorney and the communications we've had up to this point is, they were trying to be as aggressive as possible, and it was, you know, up to this point, it was, the way it's been framed is, we're, the town's gonna be in a position, so that the possessions are out of there, and we can be dealing with it how we see fit, toward the end of 19, is how it's been framed to date. I mean, if we have to get over there and move a tractor-trailer, that's not an auction, we have a piece of equipment to do that.
Right.
And then figure out how we're gonna distribute it.
Yeah, well, I would suggest as soon as we get possession, we hire all metals to come in and clean it out.
We have it a little bit budgeted now, so we could do that, so we got some options.
Yeah, we'll have to see what's left, but that was a good idea.
That's all I have for the manager's report.
Great, thank you. Do you have, do you also have a road foreman report?
Yeah, so, sorry, I didn't realize Tom wasn't gonna be in here tonight. Tom did, he tweaked his knee a little bit on a response of the accident scene last week, so that's one of the reasons I suspect he's not involved in the meeting here tonight. The, a couple things I can report on, the mowing, the roadside mowing with the, is that Summit as well? Summit is complete, and the feedback I got from Tom is, you know, he was pretty happy with the product, and-
Well, I'm not.
You're not?
No.
Okay.
Not at all.
Alright.
Because it's a terrible job, there's, the intersection's still got stuff growing out of it, there's nothing that's done in the village. I mowed Mcville because it was one lane, no.
Okay. Danny, if you wanna just give me the, give me the notes on those areas you were concerned about, we can just make sure that, you know, we're aware. I didn't realize that there were any issues. Tom, give me a positive report.
You couldn't even see the sign at Mcville.
Say again?
You couldn't even see the stop sign, the yield sign at the end of Mcville.
Hmm, yeah.
I mean, you know, there's, no.
Okay, so ongoing ditch work, there has been some other coal patch work that has been taking place.
Coal patch.
Yeah, and then the Stratton Road, a culvert there on Stratton Road had been giving us trouble, and that was repaired this last week. There's been ongoing grading and chloride application taking place, and we're hopefully getting away from these patterns of these heavy rain events, but we do continue to experience them, but there has been quite a bit of ditch work taking place. That's, I guess, what I would cover for Public Works. I guess the other thing I should comment on is they are starting to move the sand and gravel, you know, starting to haul from the sand and gravel.
Crusher?
Crusher, yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and that's as much as I would report from Tom's report.
Are we keeping track of the hours that are spent on the reservoir project, roof project?
For our crew doing the removals? I don't know that, I haven't asked for that, but I could tally that. It has not been significant, I know they have been working it in as we've gone along, Danny, but I, so to answer your question, the answer's no.
Right.
But I could probably tally it.
You know, I wasn't, I believe the highway maintenance crew should be doing highway maintenance.
Sure.
I spoke to Edward downtown one day, and he said he felt like they were just fitting it in on days when the weather wasn't good or something else, so.
Well, that's fine, but I would like to know, because there's other things they could fit in, like weed whacking around stop signs, so you can see them, cut and brush, mowing back, cut and brush with roppers on, in the village, where it's single lane on streets within the village. I mean, Tommy was the one that told us that his crew wasn't physically fit enough to cut brush, and I'm not sure they're physically fit enough then to be calling in and out of the reservoir lugging stuff on a ladder.
I'm not sure those were his words.
I'm absolutely positive, he sat right in that chair, told me that.
Alright.
So, as you can tell, I'm really displeased with the fact that we're letting our roads grow in, so you can't even drive down them. And I really, I haven't gotten much support to take care of that, though.
No, I'm definitely supportive of taking care of that. I need to, yeah.
Anyway, move on.
Moving on. Police Department report.
All right, one on this one. Let's see, we have updated the video monitoring at the PD, we had to replace the recording box, kind of the brain of all the cameras, and so we replaced that. By statute, we have to record certain investigations now, certain interviews have to be recorded interviews, so we put in a, we put it in ourselves when we went into that building in 2013, and the box stopped recording and causing issues, so we were a new box, I think it was 300 bucks, something like that, for the box. We were able to use the same, we were able to get a box from the same company, so we were able to use the same cameras, we didn't have to do anything, anything there, and replaced the monitor with a bigger monitor, so we could actually see it, it was a little tiny monitor that you really had to squint to see the cameras, so we replaced that with a bigger monitor. We got that done. Our conference room up there, we had originally designed that to be a conference center or a room that we could use in any type of emergency, where we would have TV monitors in the room that were set up for, where we could plug in laptop computers and mirror screens, so that, you know, not everybody's hunched over a little laptop, you could actually see it on those, so we were able to get those and get those set up in there after however many years since 2013, we got those ordered and get those in. Again, not a big, they were 100 bucks a piece for the two of them, so again, not a big expense, but, but we got it done. So, that was the big thing, so we, you know, any, if that needed to be a command center, which is ideally what that building would be used for, since we have telephone, radio communication, you know, all, everything really, we need computers, except for a generator.
That's what I was just gonna ask.
That's what we gotta figure out next, but, 'cause we don't, 'cause power has gone out up there, and we lose everything when power goes out.
Well, part of the reason we have this generator is because you guys are in the basement.
Right, right, exactly. We, the police department got the grant for that generator, because they were there, but obviously, we're not gonna move that generator up there, because it is still useful in this building as well, so we just need to, it'd probably be a project-
It would be if it was the emergency command center.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Whatever uses it have.
Well, I mean, yeah, I don't know, it depends on-
If the power goes off in the day, they're not gonna fire it up, keep working, and then go home.
Right.
Comes on automatically.
Really?
Yeah.
What, here?
But I mean, still, that's-
It's automatic transfer, we stay right in business.
But still, I mean, is that priority places having a-
And that is in our emergency plan, that your place is listed as our primary, right? Secondary is Lemoyle Sheriff.
Right, you know, and the sheriff, as far as Lemoyle, is secondary because they do dispatch, but we're not all leaving Hardwick to go down there to sit there and set up a command center, so ideally, it needs to be in town, and that would be the ideal location.
Are your grant funds still available?
No, I've looked for the past several years, and those all dried up. They were through Homeland Security is where they came, came from, those have all dried up. Anything that I've been able to research-
And what's the cost of a generator?
I don't know, haven't got to that point.
How big is it?
Actually, this one?
Uh-huh.
It's been there for, why, since early 2000?
Yeah, I'm sure the technology would be a much more compact one, but I would think we would need one at average.
And that's definitely not my area of expertise, as far as that goes. I know it turns on and generates power, and that's about it. But, you know, at some point, we probably should look at putting a generator, you know, at that building.
I would think it'd be-
Because the building's very useful.
I would think it'd be a priority, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, those are the type of things that when you need it, and you don't have it.
Right, and we've found, you know, our phone systems go down, we don't have radio communication out of that building, we don't have computer technology out of that building when there's, when there's no power. You know, luckily, the village is generally pretty good, and does not lose power for any length of time generally, but in an emergency, who knows what the emergency is, so if we could generate our own power, it certainly would be useful to do that.
I think that would have our budget down.
I'd be surprised if there were not grant funds available, I would think, I mean, not with a community facilities grant type of thing, or-
I would, but it's not, but I have a lot of other things to do, so, you know, so I haven't found them, but, but it doesn't mean they're not out there, I just haven't, haven't found anything, but it, yeah, it's definitely something that is probably a priority that we should think of. I know we have put money into, you know, capital fund for building improvements, things like that, but we do need to look at the roof, and that's what our focus was, was putting that money in.
I think it'd be a lot easier for generating and for roofing.
Yeah, so, it's just something, you know, definitely something we should consider as we move towards that, because everything else, you know, if there was a weather event, now we have TVs, we have, you know, all the stuff up there, we can monitor it from there as well, and all of, all of the, the weather, emergency weather alerts that come in, come into my email and everything, so it's really a place, that's kinda where you're gonna operate out of. You can't move everything there down here, you know, to set up, it's just, it's quite difficult to do that, so, but we're getting there, nothing happens overnight, and so. We've also had, over the past month, had radio issues, we weren't able to transmit out of our station with the radio, so Burlington Communications came up, they found that the antenna on West Hill was bad, very bad, and so they had to replace the antenna, and water had gotten down into the antenna cable, which was not allowing, they described how much input and how much output or whatever, but they said basically, it was not good. So we thought we had the issues resolved with that, we found that within a day or two, the base station that we had has some issues with it, so they came today, they're gonna bring us back a spare radio until they can take that one and figure out what's going on with that radio, so. Let's see, we did have, past week, a week ago, we had two crashes, fatal crashes, one was a medical event, but they're fatal crashes, and we do have a fire investigation also we were doing, so right now, got our hands full with some stuff that they were working with. We, and during this whole month, we had several vacations of officers rotating vacations and so on, that we had to work through as well. Let's see, I spoke with John Longe, he had advised me that within the last couple days, I spoke with him, that he's expecting to be back to his duties in the next couple weeks, so things have worked out for him, so-
I saw him on the street yesterday.
Yeah, he did, he did come back, and he did some parking enforcement, and said he should be able to be back in the next couple weeks for everything, so.
So he can do that thing with, for Alberta?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Unless something comes up and that changes, but that's, yeah. That's what he expected so far. We've ordered a watch guard in-car camera system for the, it'll be going into the new car whenever that gets here, we ordered that under the Governor's Highway Funds, that pays 84% of the, of the cost of that camera, it's a $5,000 in-car camera. The, we replaced one a couple years ago, maybe it was a couple years ago, because we had no in-car cameras, the ones we had were the old VHS style, so you had to pop your trunk, pop a VHS in, and obviously, that technology is antiquated, so. So we were able to purchase one a couple years ago for one of the cars, this will put another one in to another one of the cars, and 84% of the cost was covered by the Governor's Highway Grant Program, so, so that's coming. The bad news is that we did not receive Governor's Highway funding for the coming year, their funding was cut, and so they concentrated on what they called problem areas, that they, I expect maybe some went to State Police, but, but yeah, what they, they said was, you know, they could identify as extreme problem areas, so, and-
Were charged with this, no?
Apparently not, yes, apparently not.
It's only to the bit.
According to them, so, you know, and we discussed that as well, because it's gone up and down, you know, you've had, when you do, when you do a lot of enforcement efforts, that tends to bring that, that down, I mean, initially, you'll have a lot of, a lot of incidents, or a lot of traffic, you know, offenses that show up initially, with that continued enforcement, that should, you know, bring that down, which is what happened. We've done it since 2011, I think, when I, when I brought that program back. And so we've had, we've spent, I guess it's a success, unfortunately, when you can't show a lot of traffic offenses, and, you know, they're looking for DUIs, and, you know, the major offenses, when you can't show a lot of that, they're gonna put that, funnel that money to somebody else who can show that, so, especially when their budget was cut, and that's, that's pretty much what happened, and they understood what I was saying, you know, by losing that funding, it may bring back more offenses that we're having to deal with, but they understood that, but not much they can do, so, so, that's it.
Thank you.
We have our cops grant, cops grant position filled.
We technically have the cops grant position filled.
There's another one.
That was when we hired Lucas- We technically have the COPS grant position filled. That was when we hired Lucas. That was the, the COPS grant. We do still have one open position.
But the COPS grant is up and running.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it is.
And you have one open position.
We have one open position right now.
That is in what state that they're interviewing?
Open, open.
Hoping for applications. I mean, it's, yeah, it's-
Is it advertised?
It has been advertised. I talked with Sean actually this week about kind of re-upping everything. Again, um, nobody, St. John'sbury has a ton of open positions, so they're not even getting applications for.
I said I have contracts with seven sheriff's departments. And every single one of them except for Orleans.
Yeah.
Has an opening?
Has several openings.
Wow.
In fact, so the point like Lemoyle can't even provide service for us.
State police included.
Yeah, state police.
Have several open positions that they can't fill. So, the applications just aren't coming in anymore.
Yep.
It's a hard job to get anybody to wanna do right now.
Even, even Chef Marku, with all his incentives, can't fill all of his, can't fill the workload.
Right.
He's happy with, you know, he's happy with the number he has. He would take more, but, um, yeah, he, everyone's that way.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a good time, I guess. It's, you know, it's certainly changing. I've seen that change over my career. It's like a roller coaster. You'll have times when you have a lot that wanna get in and they can't get in because there's a lot of applicants and there's other times when you can't get any applicants. Nobody wants to do it. So it's-
Same, same thing's gonna happen with nursing, cause now in the next five years, my mom's gonna be starving for nurses.
Yep. So-
Cause of the flow of-
So we, you know, we'll re-up the advertising and, and see, we've done a few ride-alongs of people that were interested, you know, and came and did a few ride-alongs.
So there's some interest.
We're still plugging along and trying to, you know, trying to fill.
And you don't wanna fill it with someone you don't want to speak.
That's not gonna happen. So, you still wanna be selective.
Right, but ultimately, those hours have been filled at overtime.
What's that?
Ultimately, those hours have been filled at overtime.
Either overtime or part-time.
Or part-time, so yeah. Well, part-time's better. Either way, it's just a different expense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. It doesn't leave a hole if that's, you know, there hasn't been any holes left, but, all right. Well, thanks for the update. Um, our zoning administrator, Kristen Leahy, is here to talk to us about, um, proposed zoning bylaw updates.
I believe I'm gonna talk about the bylaw updates tonight.
Okay.
Or to transfer them to you from the planning commission. There's only two. One's a statutory requirement, one's a proposed zoning district boundary amendment. It's more to ask you to set a date for the hearing and so I can facilitate that. You have all the information in front of you and rather than go through it now and then go through it again at the public hearing, it makes sense just to, to set a public hearing date. Unless, I mean, I'm happy to answer questions, but, um-
So, public hearing, do you have a proposed public hearing date?
September 5th would be the next, that's your Thursday, that's your Thursday. That would give enough time for the statutory requirements in the paper.
Can you be on a motion for a public hearing for the zoning bylaws update on September 5th at 5:30?
Yep.
Yes.
Did you say second?
Yes, second on that.
So, all in favor of scheduling that, um, hearing, public hearing, please say aye.
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 All right.
Any opposed?
I was just gonna say, Kristen, next time.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Well, with everything else going on, I just wanted to make any-
It sure happens, yeah.
I wanna get this out of the way before I plan down that.
Good job.
It'll be in the paper next week.
All right, great. Thank you.
Same, I told you five minutes.
All right. Uh, da-da-da-da. Now, item number one, we are to the exciting Bridgman Roof Reservoir Construction. Um, we had Jason Booth here, cause we have, we actually are at a point where we have, um, we had bids for construction and you guys are recommending one of the bids over the other.
Correct.
So, do you wanna just give us the brief overview of what this is gonna encompass?
Sure. So, so in all, we received two bids. The bid opening was held on August 8th. Bids were from Spates Construction out of Derby, Vermont, and Menosha of Mooresville. Spates' bid was for $364,000 and change. Menosha's total bid was $669,000 and change. So, we have gone through a bid analysis and typically with a bid analysis, what we do is we check banking information, bonding information, check references on the apparent low bidder, and we go through another cost analysis for the project to update the total project cost with the low bid. Spates has come back as a responsive and responsible bidder, so the bonding checked out, no issues on bonding. Banking seems to be in full and they don't have any issues. Any red flags on the banking side, references were good as well. We checked the number of references. So they are responsive, responsible bidder, which is really checks the boxes for state approval and state concurrence with the recommendation to award. So we are recommending that the contract be awarded to Spates Construction in the amount of $364,000, $364,600.
Which is more than I projected.
That's correct. So the bid, so the, the bid, the bid price was more than what was anticipated. The construction bid price was more than what was anticipated. And so, from a total project perspective, I'm not sure if, I think the bid analysis was forwarded to everybody, but just to run through quick on the total project cost, right now, with the, with the low bid of $364,600, carrying a 5% contingency of $18,230, that's for any miscellaneous items that may come up during construction, engineering costs, and then there's other costs that are legal costs, advertisement costs for bidding, legal costs for bond, those types of, those types of items. The total estimated project cost now lands at $449,692. So that's approximately $29,000 over what the bond authorization was for. Bond authorization was for $420,000, which included those items as estimates. So, I guess there's, what we need to do at this point is, um, those two pieces. So, our recommendation is to award to Spates. In addition to that, because we're over the bonding capacity of $420,000, in order to move forward for the state, from the state's approval perspective, we need to show that the project is whole from a cost perspective. So there's a couple ways to go about that. There's, there's reserve funding that Sean has indicated is available to bridge that gap of approximately $29,000 over the bond authorization. The other alternative is that per state statute, municipalities can increase a bond authorization one time by up to $75,000 by passing a resolution without a public vote. The select board has the, has the opportunity to do that. So those are the two options to, at this point, show that the project, for the state, show that the project is whole from, from, from the funding perspective. And that allows you to move forward. Right now, in either of those scenarios, whether you commit to use reserve funding or you pass the resolution to increase the bond capacity, you're not committing to necessarily use either or at this point. You're just saying we're, we're committing to at some point potentially needing to use that money. It's there if we need it to use it. So, once the project is done, we'll know what the loan, the actual loan value will be. What that means is construction will be done, we'll know what the construction cost is, we'll know if we've used any contingency. Some of our engineering fees are not to exceed fees, so if we don't use all of the fee, it doesn't get billed out. So, so there's some potential in there for not using all of the funding. So, we don't necessarily know where we're gonna end up with the final project cost. So this is really just to say, right now, this is a snapshot state. We have this money available to move forward. And then, once we get to the end of the project, we'll know what the total project is.
It's maybe dumb, but didn't we have capital in the budget for the reservoir, or no?
Yeah, that's what you're saying. We have, we have money in there.
So why wouldn't we?
Well, I say we just pay for it.
I thought that there-
Cause you may not even have to pay for it.
Right.
Maybe, it's only $29,000 of a $450,000 project.
Yeah, I guess I kind of agree, except that I thought we had guidance from Paul Giuliani that they, it would look better if we increased the bond amount. But maybe I misunderstood.
You can go either route. You can go either route. You can either spend, you can commit on the front end, or you can authorize to extend. So you have those two, there's those two scenarios.
What are the pros and cons of each of them?
So, the commitment to increase the bond capacity by $75,000, it gives you the opportunity to use up to that amount. You may choose, once you get into funding the project throughout construction and start pulling your loan money, that you don't need it, or you choose not to use it. Or you can get to the end of the project and decide you're gonna use your reserves to pay any overruns beyond the bond capacity.
So the terms on the loan are likely very good.
Correct. So you have a 0% interest rate. And right now, you, the state has committed 30% subsidy, so principal loan forgiveness at the end of the, once the loan, once we get the final closure on the funding for the project, that final loan value will be reduced by 30%. So your principal forgiveness at the end of the project will decrease by 30% total project cost.
The $29,000 will be reduced by 30%? If we extend the bond.
Your total project would be reduced by?
But if we, if we extend the bond, but if we pay out of our reserve, we don't get that discount.
So it didn't make more sense?
That changed my mind. Yeah. I say we extend the bond.
And Blake, you said previously, correct me if I'm wrong, but just making this decision tonight doesn't necessarily bind us to borrowing that money. We could decide to change our minds, say we're paying for part of this out of our capital.
Now, this doesn't show that the project is whole. You don't commit to any funding until the project is done and you know your final loan value is.
Yep. So, so actually, we had, um, we have language from, right, from Paul.
Probably needs to be specific.
It is very specific.
Okay, read it.
Nope, coming soon to a, we'll give it to Sherry. Are you gonna do it, Sherry?
The bond, I think it's pretty specific.
So we're gonna resolve.
Right. So, I move the select board acting pursuant to 24 VSA 4755A4, hereby increase the amount of such authorized indebtedness by 75% and-
And $75,000.
$75,000. And this resolution shall take place immediately. Second.
Oh, there's a competition for second. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, so be it so resolved. And that needs, so that'll get recorded in our minutes and then the paper actually is signed by Alberta.
And the only other thing is, I think we need a motion for, um, for the contractor and authorizing town manager to execute the notice of intent to award.
So, um, so those are two things. So is everybody comfortable with?
Yes, the standard, we do that for everybody, right?
Yeah.
But that's my job. And we, and the contractor is Spates, because that's the-
Pretty bad amount. 360.
Yeah, so you're, are you making a motion, Danny?
I move, yes, that we award the Bridgman Hill, I'm looking, um-
Tom, try.
Oh, right here. Bridgman Hill Reservoir Roof Replacement, be awarded to Spates Construction. Incorporated Derby, Vermont, for the contract amount of $364,600.
All right. Um, second. And discussion, I just wanna throw out there that I previously had some emails and from your office and it sounded like, even though this low bid came in above the anticipated bid, your feeling or analysis was that there was nothing to be gained by trying to wait and bid again in the spring and, no.
I really don't think you're gonna gain anything, other than you're just gonna lose time and you're really lost on having an empty reservoir.
Not an odd group of, just out of those two independent contractors, you know, those two contractors, it seems to me that it's really odd, must be a really odd project.
It's a specialty project.
Yep.
You know, for something like this, a typical GC wouldn't necessarily look at this because it's, it's specialty work that a subcontractor would do. So what you're looking at are the subcontractors that would be looking at a larger project. So you're kind of narrowing your bidding pool. And then you narrow it again because some of those contractors can't get bonded. And they also can't comply with the state procurement requirements that go along with a project like this. So you're kind of narrowing things down the more you look at it and it becomes more of a specialized project. 300.
$300,000 more, you know what I'm saying? So it would tell me that we better get this thing built.
All right. Just point of clarification, we just make sure we've also got in the motion notice to authorize town manager to execute.
I think we'll do that one next.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
It's all right.
So we could, I'll add it to my motion that we authorize the town manager to execute notice of intent.
To award the construction.
To award the construction bid, yeah. That's why the so moves thing works really well for me.
Sorry, law detail on this one.
Yeah, yeah, it all needs to be in there, I understand.
Is there any aspect of when they can begin? Well, I don't know if I'll be able to start talking about schedule just a little bit right now. So, now that we have this, and we have the, oh, sorry, yeah, all right.
So, motion is to go with Spates and authorize town manager to get that going. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, everybody. All right, yes.
So, actually, while you're in motion, sorry, just so that we're all clear and you guys are in the clear, I would recommend that you make a motion to elect Sean as the authorized representative for the project. What that-
All of, all of the, yeah.
That's correct, that's correct. So we have, we're looking to have a pre-construction meeting probably sometime next week. So at that meeting, we have contract documents, the notice to proceed award, notice of award, which we want Sean to execute, just for ease. It doesn't mean that you can't be there, but the state's gonna look for an authorized representative and, and he may already be, but just to be on the safe side.
We are authorized Sean to execute all agreements in the reservoir, Bridgman Hill Reservoir Roof Project.
Sex it.
Get it done, Sean.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 So, schedule wise-
Sorry.
Okay, that's everyone, motion carries.
Schedule wise, now that you have this information, we're going to, we'll have to follow this up, get this to the state. They're, they'll do a quick turnaround on their concurrence. That's not gonna hold us up scheduling a pre-construction meeting. So we're gonna look to see if we can get Spates ready to have a pre-construction meeting next week. Their, their lead time, their, their timing on that is gonna be getting their bonding in place. Typically, that's about two, three days to get bonding documents back from their bonding company. So it'll probably be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I know Sean's not necessarily available Thursday, but somewhere at the end of next week, we're gonna look to get a pre-construction meeting so we can execute the contract. What that does is that releases them to start getting their POs out to their subcontractors to get materials coming, cause some of those may have a little bit of lead time. So, uh, we're still on track to hopefully have them start get the ground, get the ground running sometime in early September, first week in September timeframe. That's still the plan. We'll have better information on that at the pre-construction meeting next week, once we have the schedule from the contractor. So that's where we are right now.
Thank you.
Good job.
I'll get information to you tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I know the final minutes wouldn't be in place until they're signed off on, so do you just need the letter, this phase?
I just need the letter.
Okay.
And, and one thing, the state's gonna need the resolution as well, Sean. I don't, I don't need that tomorrow for Roger Verderon. I just need the letter for, for Roger.
Great. And then, and Alberta needs to see, do the resolution.
Yep.
All right. So that's, um, this is great, this project moving ahead and also to think that it might, it will, probably will get completed this fall, which is awesome. Yeah, be great. We'll get the, then we'll be back to two reservoirs. It's a very good thing. We have the second one. It's a very good thing we have the second one.
Good thing, I was talking to Sean earlier that the process for this reservoir roof replacement was started was already applied. Already underway. Yeah.
Thanks to Jason, he had a meeting.
Thank you very much.
Jason had a meeting in Bennington this morning at nine o'clock, so he left his home in St. Albans at four-thirty this morning. Now he's driving back to St. Albans.
Wow.
So thank you.
Yeah, thanks much.
I'll be in touch.
Six minutes to sound, we'll get you.
Next up is.
Before you say that, that's why the state of Ramon wanted us to put that second reservoir in twenty years ago.
Because they thought this day might come.
They thought this day might come.
Oh, that's just.
Yeah, they didn't, yeah. You know what I'm saying, that's what sometimes we cut the we cut this one close because if that reservoir went down, maybe I'd have had that one.
Right, I know, they did wasn't that one's only been up what like a year.
Year.
Year and a half, maybe, it doesn't matter, way too close, three years is way too three years, way too close.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Would have been kind of an emergency situation.
Thank you for all the activity on that, we're keeping things rolling, so appreciate that, Bridgeman.
It's pretty aggressive.
That's what we need.
Yeah, it's aggressive schedule, so.
Well, that's what we need.
It's great. All right, next up is item three, Select Board authorized town manager to execute a quit claim deed from the town of Hardwick to the town of Hardwick in regards to the former senior center parcel being merged. So this is what we need to do to get those. Oh, sorry, did I skip one?
But we already we already addressed it.
No, we didn't.
Did we not? Oh, excuse me, sorry, Casey.
Sorry, thank you. Let's back up to item number two, which is the bond documents for the same project, Bridgeman Reservoir Roof Project.
Those numbers have changed now.
Yes, those numbers have changed because we just bumped it by seventy-five thousand.
Yeah. But under the hat, we can still do it, yeah?
I don't know how to address this, I hadn't thought about it.
Because our documents are before, we have.
Oh, we got to sign it.
We don't have to go back to them and get it for not much more.
Well, we could have.
No, because.
We got to come together.
Can we just change the numbers on there and then sign?
No, I don't think we want to do that.
Can we just give you some time, we can get together while we're at town.
That's true, we could come.
Special meeting.
And not make.
Because we have to redo our application and everything, right? I don't think we have to do that. Isn't it just like a contingency, like if we had to?
My recommendation would be to move forward on it and if it's wrong, we table it.
If we're wrong, if it's wrong, we do it again.
Yes.
Yeah, do it again for because this is for the four-twenty.
But we just bumped it.
It might be just a single document that needs to be added to that if we bump it, so I don't.
So you do this just in case we need.
Just do it.
Jason will be here, he probably knows.
So let's go home, he's had a long day.
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we sign the Bridgeman Hill Reservoir Bond for four hundred and twenty thousand with a hundred and twenty-six thousand principal forgiveness, principal forgiveness, excuse me.
Second.
And if it's not right.
So we've already discussed that it may not be correct, but we're going to sign it and hope for the best.
So we could maybe redo it.
Yeah, all right, so all in favor signing the bond documents, please say aye.
Aye.
And everyone, aye, motion carries.
Right, we can meet first of the week.
Right, or whenever.
Just pay for our people.
We know what we want to do. We don't, we want to move it forward.
Okay, so the first part is the loan agreement, it's just the chair on that one, that bottom page.
Stay revolving fund. And Alberta needs to sign too.
Exhibit C is a general kind of planning purposes of how it's going to pay down and that recovers all of you, please.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that. Check to you guys. I have a pen.
Resolution.
Resolution. You okay?
No, we just sent an email saying we were going to show it. I don't know. We didn't get any.
Although I did see Tom, I did see Tom, is it Tom, Blackhurst, Alstair?
No, they're.
Tom Gilbert.
Yep.
I did see heaven crutches, he's on crutches.
Is he really?
Well, they're doing their big show up there today and I come through, I come over the mountain, poor guy's out there, I've been out on there on crutches the last two days. I don't know, I was going to stop tonight.
Yeah, there was stuff going on.
Yeah, he had a crowd, he had a big crowd.
That's good.
Yeah, it was good.
Are you waiting for that?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I feel his pain, crutches are no good.
Quite literally. Feel his pain. Next time, tell Aaron not to push the motorcycle over on you.
He's a.
That's what I heard.
I wasn't there.
No, no, he went home.
All right.
I left him in good health.
Yeah, Aaron left me, I was perfectly good health.
Casey, did we hit all those? I'm good, okay. So now we're going to roll on to item three, where I thought we were before, but we weren't. So this is Sean's been working diligently to clean up the deeds and combine those parcels for the library, right?
Yeah.
Essentially what's going on.
Well, that's been ongoing, I just came in at the back end of the process.
I know.
I move that we authorize the town manager to execute the quit claim deed from the town of Hardwick to the town of Hardwick in regards to the fellow senior center parcel being merged with the original library parcel.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, that was everyone.
So that's a done deal now.
Is that's going to be done, Sean, is that the last piece?
With that, Bill will process it.
Yeah.
Bill files it, it's done.
Really?
Yes.
Nice, that's cool. Progress.
Quite a process.
It took three years.
We are fast. All right, so next is item four, discussion of two vacancies on the Hazen Union School Board. So I questioned this because we I didn't remember ever appointing anyone to a vacancy there before.
Maybe.
And I think what has happened, and so we had Bill double check that we do appoint and we do.
I think that's probably why.
But I think it's because we don't.
But Steve's here.
Oh.
I can sit in the back and be quiet.
So I think it's because because we no longer have Hardwick Town School Board because that is now a union school. Yeah, that's right, right? So then the fallback, kind of the second fallback is the Select Board to appoint. And the the School Board, Hazen Board has sent a list, there are two vacancies, is that correct?
Two vacancies, Tom Gilbert and Cher resigned last May, he's now the manager of the Building and Grounds Operations. And Kaylee Galloway-Kane just barely resigned because she's got another position with the OSSU now and it's a very obvious conflict, so there are now two positions.
And those are Hardwick positions, right?
Those were Hardwick representatives, yes. There are two remaining, Andrew Meyer and Amy Hall.
And so you were more attentive of this of folks who for our consideration, I think, but were those all folks who also expressed interest and have you talked to them about it or?
Those names, I asked the remaining Hardwick Board members to come up with some names so you don't have to start from scratch one. And they did, they talked to some of them that are not on the list because they they just could not swing it. I think I don't think they talked to everybody on that list, but those are what the remaining Hardwick representatives, those are the persons that are representatives that would be good.
The I saw that, did everybody see that list? It's like six names, I think.
Yeah.
Roughly, did everybody get that? If not, I can forward.
I mean, I have.
But that was here. That was.
To forward.
If you wanted to read the list.
So what I'm thinking, yeah, I can be, what I'm thinking actually, so normally what we tend to do when we need to fill a vacancy is we advertise it and the next meeting or whenever, like we said, so we ask people to send in a short letter of interest to the town manager's office. And I guess I would be in favor of doing that same process unless there's a reason not to. And we could reach out to these people, you know, we could just reach out to them directly and say, you know, just so you know, this is open, you your name came up.
We got to put it, I think it needs to be published.
That's what I said, it needs to be published and public.
Certainly reach out to these people if they're interested. I'm on the upside, I'm a little bit.
That's why I just.
Trying to read this and then talk.
Yeah, read and listen and think all at once is too much work.
Too much work for me.
So as long as that doesn't hamstring you guys, I mean, I think that's a process that's a little that's fair and open and.
Yes, absolutely. In the last paragraph of that memo, we made clear that we hope that you include the list of people and the consideration of the ones that we want to come across.
We want to be a letter of interest.
Correct.
Because it doesn't pay to appoint someone who isn't going to actually do it.
Well, I'll tell the Hardwick members that.
That is true.
That the Select Board will appoint the vacant positions and I'll leave it up to the Hardwick members to contact these people and maybe ask them to proactively contact people.
There's one person who I think is on your list, but Patrick Kane did already send me an email, interested in it and wanted to know what the process was. So we have one, I'll tell him we're going to open it and.
Yeah, everybody.
And have it put in a letter of interest, but I know at least one of those people.
To the town manager.
Correct.
So our office will take care of posting an ad for that.
Right.
In next week's paper and have a letter to Sean of interest.
So.
From Bridge Forum.
So for, let me just think through though, so if we, I'm just wanting, thinking about the timeline.
Yeah.
What's the timing? So if we post it, we have to give people a little while to reply.
Well, we do that three weeks between now and our next meeting, so.
So if it goes out.
Should be able to do it the next week.
Okay.
Next Wednesday, which is the twenty-first.
Okay.
And we ask them to have their responses by the thirtieth and then we get them out to you and like on the third or fourth before the meeting and then we may run it fit.
Yeah.
Adequate.
I think so.
Fine.
Exactly about a week and a half, business days.
Yep, that sounds good and just, yeah, just put in, yeah, yeah, we can do an executive session at the end.
Okay.
At the point.
You know what I really missed? What I basically three month calendar.
I looked over there several times.
I know, we used to have the big red and white, you know, three month calendars there, so when we have these discussions.
Be like, I keep looking.
I know, I keep looking.
And I don't have my phone and all that. But yeah, so sounds like that'd be September fifth, as Kristen just pointed out to me as our next meeting, so.
Is that an okay date for an answer?
Yes, and in fact, I kind of slowed you down by not telling you about Todd's resignation until now. It was the end of the year.
So do you turn it up?
Yes.
That's good.
Yes.
I'm glad none of these people quit, sort of.
No.
I've had enough of this, I quit.
No.
They all moved to.
I've been on the Select Board and the Planning Commission and all kinds of boards around here and I have to tell you, this is the best board I've ever been on, especially in the recent years because it has eight independent thinkers.
So be sure to put that in the advertisement, that this is the best board I've ever had on. And you want to be part of it.
We can operate that way, but we are pretty able to have thinkers.
Yeah, but we also try to move forward.
We also try to move forward and understand what the situation is, deal with it, even though it's likely we don't devolve agree on what should be done.
On everything, right, so, yeah. Well, thank you very much for bringing this to us.
So just to be clear, so to be clear, this process is was is changed because of the new education, whatever we have now.
So looking at the statute, if you if you look in the section for the union school districts, it says that if there's a vacancy, then the town school district would have, this town school board, if there is one, would appoint to the vacancy.
Okay, so that elementary school board would have normally.
It would have, if it still existed.
So forgive me because I didn't pay attention to this because I had too much other things to worry about. So now there's still, is there an elementary, union school board and a Hazen school board?
Or something.
So there's still two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's a Hazen school board anymore. There's there's a unified elementary school board.
Yeah.
And Hazen is of course a joint collaboration.
Right.
But there's no, no, there's, I don't think there's a Woodbury school board either. I mean, we got it, disappeared.
Yeah.
After the merger.
Yeah.
So if we have this situation with a Woodbury representative, I think the proper course would be to go to the Woodbury Select Board.
Select Board.
But before, we went to the school board.
Right.
So it makes sense to me, whether or not.
So for the sake of the people watching at home and watching the tape, would you introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah, I should have asked.
Hi. I'm Steve Freihoff, and I'm chair of, current chair of the Hazen Union School Board. And I've come here tonight to ask the Select Board to fill two vacancies on the school board that were, vacancies were created by resignations from Hardwick representatives. And the board's going to do that, and you should tell them if you're interested.
Yes, there you go, the first advertisement right there.
As they say in school, am I excused? You are.
All right, next up is the local emergency management plan. I thought we already adopted this, am I just dreaming?
We did, till we found out we didn't have a generator.
So what happened on this is there was a, I updated, I think about a month back, that there was a there was a new template that was released for this operational year.
But I thought we did it again since the new template.
No.
We didn't?
No, did not.
So I offer, I had, I make a motion that we adopt the two thousand nineteen local emergency management plan adoption plan.
Second.
There you go.
Okay, so for, we got a form that I'll have you sign, Eric.
Yeah.
You do that and then what we'll do is we share it with NDDA.
Yeah.
And share, what we do then is get it uploaded to the pertinent Ramon Emergency Management site and then we're all shipshape. And thanks to Tom and Aaron and Casey for their help processing the draft that I sent to the Select Board prior this week. We had just a couple of other edits on some name changes and things like this, so I appreciate their input, so we got everything in order.
Good, so all in favor of adopting the the new plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's everyone, so motion carries. That's coming back at you. And now we are, oh, so what, this is item six, this is.
So the damn, Joe, give it away.
Give it away.
Give it away, give it away.
Okay, I'm fine to vote for it, but it seems like you could have done it without us, but...
Well, I think we could have done it without you too.
Okay. Here we are.
Things tend to get away from us.
Yes, you asked the question, and then it's out there, and then you...
So I make a motion to authorize the distribution of the oil there, fire department hose car, we're gonna refer to forever from now on as hose car number one.
It's the Hardwick hose car.
Huh?
It's the Hardwick hose car.
The Hardwick hose car.
The Hardwick hose car.
Right.
Let's get rid of it, how about that?
The, yeah, for the historical society to dispose of it as they...
Because we have somebody that wants it, right, for somebody that will take it.
Yes, there's a collector who has researched it, and when I suggested that it would be, we would like to give it to him, he was sort of like, oh.
Perfect, perfect, perfect! Alright, so Danny's made a motion...
Why does the man for that thing?
Second.
That the historical society's gonna...
I got about two acres out back from my house, you can come down and collect my stuff.
Alright, all in favor of authorizing the distribution of the Hardwick Fire Department Hose Car, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, impose, motion carries.
I can see the backside of the depot, it's starting to look pretty sharp over there.
Thank you.
I haven't seen this since I was young.
I go see the nice, I mean, I see the color, and it's wrapped in a bag.
Haven't been but.
It's one of the nice.
Select Board, next is item seven, select board to review and approve a name change on existing second class liquor license in Alberta, send us a note, and also answered my, my constant question, which is, do we have any issues? And she said, no. It's not in there though.
Who is it for?
It's for DNL, but they're DBA DNL, right?
Well, that, it's, um, so they were KS Enterprises doing businesses DNL beverage, they're gonna be GXBLLC doing businesses DNL beverage.
That's each charter, so what are they, charter?
Correct.
Oh.
That hasn't been DNL for a long time, yeah.
Oh, but it was.
Hasn't been, it's been M&amp;M's for some time.
M&amp;M's. Alright, so that's that one.
I make a motion that we authorize the name change of existing second class liquor license board. Business, doing business as DNL.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, jeez.
Any post?
Let's stop reading.
Motion carries, that was everyone, thank you. Any select board reports?
I have two.
Two? That's more than you allotment.
The pedestrian and traffic safety task force has had its, has gone to the, I went as a representative to the planning commission, they're on board, we're actively pursuing Doug, what's his last name?
Doug Morton?
Doug Morton from NVDA, he's the transportation guy. Um, he's, sounds like he's gonna come make a, a visit with us on Friday, February thirteenth, and we're gonna...
September.
So I'm sorry.
Yeah, February.
Wow, September.
Could be chilly.
Thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth.
Ready for Valentine.
Yeah, so, um, to just kind of assess, you know, take a look at the 2009 assessment, take a look at what's happening now, and help us get some focus points. And we're gonna meet at the new coffee shop, so we can sit and watch the traffic.
That's why it's called Front Seat Coffee, because we got a front seat to that intersection.
Indeed.
You don't want to take away the main attraction.
You think so, if somebody comes whaling it up through there and straight?
Other little tidbits are, um, I spoke to Lynn at the Village Restaurant, and she gave me some good, um, feedback on the speed bumps, and she said that she felt like they were pretty effective.
Are they not as effective as the construction companies?
Well, there's that, but even in the morning, she said even in the morning, when there isn't anybody parked, and you can easily go around them, there's less traffic going through there.
Well, the visual, so I have not tried to straddle in yet. I still think my truck will, but, um, just the visual, when you glance down there, you see...
Yeah.
Says that is, just, if you got any kind of gray matter upstairs, it tells you that that is not a quicker route.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's all that does, it's really, you know, when I look down and I see those now, it's like, nah.
That's great.
Brain tells you not to, you know, instead of saying, oh, that's a wide open racetrack, you know? So...
Well, maybe that's it, yeah.
I think if nothing else, Aaron feels the same way, that it, it, I mean, it doesn't take someone very, you know, logical to think that going across them is gonna make it quicker, a quicker route. Yeah, I have seen cars backing out, and I believe it does cause a great deal of heartburn for those people, because one tire has to go, you know, because it is such a short space, when you back out of them.
It feels weird.
It feels weird, I'm sure some people are uncomfortable with that feeling.
It probably feels a little like going into that, um, grate, you know, on the street, and parking those spots by the only one.
When your tire goes down, yeah.
It's weird.
But you know what I'm saying, other than that, it's just a...
Yeah, it's just a thing.
That's good.
It seems like it's helped so far.
That's good.
Um, so that's that, and then, um, sad news from the townhouse is that we did not receive the cultural facilities grant.
For the...
For the fire escapes. So we're, we're waiting for notes from the Arts Council.
Yeah.
Um, they just had a lot of applicants, and it's competitive, and...
It wasn't year-round.
So we're gonna try to tighten up our thing, um, it's not, um, I've spoken to the, to representative from the division, and it's not appropriate for the, their October historic preservation application, but, um, I'm looking for some other possibilities, um, and if, yeah, and then we'll try again next year, but...
It'd be really nice to get that funded.
It would, because those, uh, fire escapes are not good, and they're not getting any better, so, that's that.
Those are against something that, when you need them, you need them to work well.
Yeah, and they, sadly, they may not, but...
You go along, find a failure, crash, it wouldn't go in.
When there's a fire.
Right. But otherwise, the season has gone well, and it's been nice to have those new screens and on the windows, and chamber players are having their final concert of the season tonight.
Already?
The library has a fundraiser concert this Saturday, and so there's stuff going on.
Great.
That's all I got.
Wes, can you give us a, just a brief update on digging underneath the depot and how that's going?
Uh, the foundation is finished.
It is?
It is, um, so we are waiting until after the chamber players have finished their season, and we have cleaned out all the stuff that's in the back room, um, and roughly first week of September, we're gonna start constructing the climate-controlled storage area for the historic records of this town. Some of that stuff is now, it's hard.
We just cleared out some space.
We just cleared out some space, right now, I just need to have, you know, two people to move a filing cabinet, so we can roll that thing out on, onto his, onto his truck. And the painting is going well, we, we authorize that it be painted, and that's going well, so it's, it's gonna be right spiffy, and this is not something the select board has had anything to do with, but I want to announce to the public that the historical society, using the money by a private donor, has sent Hardwick gazzets dating from eighteen ninety through nineteen nineteen to be microfilmed and digitized, that until these films, this stuff comes back, the only place you can read Hardwick gazzets is in Hardwick, and once, and they're on high acid paper, which is burning itself up, and in a hundred years will be gone, but with microfilm located at the state archives, and these digital versions located on the state library's digital library collection, they will be available to anybody, anywhere, and I don't know how long the digital versions are gonna last, there's no telling with digital, but I know the microfilm will be available for hundreds of years, literally, we know that about microfilm. So Hardwick's history in its, in the time when Hardwick, when Hardwick's history is different from any other town in the area, is suddenly going to be available in a way it has never been.
Cool.
Pretty excited about that, aren't you?
I am really excited.
I can tell just by the tone of your voice, it's like, it's like me seeing a new excavator, man, it's like, yeah.
If I do nothing else ever for Hardwick's history, having, having finally gotten this project together, makes, well, I will go to my grave happy.
We should thank the donor, because I'm sure this is not a cheap endeavor.
This is a ten thousand dollar donation.
Yeah.